Good evening, everyone. Welcome to our council meeting of December 20th. Before we get started, I just want to take a moment to reflect on a passing that we had in our town this past few days. Reeve Vee-Moon and I attended the funeral today for Bill Ringrose, who, as we know, for more than 17 years, Bill was involved with Renfrew as a member of council and dedicated and committed in gracious leadership. His contribution to Renfrew and Town Council and Mayor are many. His legacy and leadership continue to shape our town today. He was respected for his collaborative approach and commitment. So I just, at this point, if we could just stand up and take a moment of silence in honor of Bill. Thank you, everyone. Now, I'd like to ask the clerk for the roll call, please.
Mayor Sidney.
Present.
Reeve Vee-Moon.
Present.
Councillor Sobolski.
Present.
Councillor Dick. Councillor Legree.
Present.
Councillor McDonald.
Present.
And Councillor McWhiter.
Present.
Mayor Sidney Weave-Corm.
Thank you very much. As we gather, we would like to acknowledge on behalf of council and a community that we are meeting on the traditional territory of the Algonquin people. We would like to thank the Algonquin people and express our respect and support for their rich history, and we are extremely grateful for their many and continued displays of friendship. We also thank the generations of people who have taken care of this land for thousands of years. Onto announcements. Any declarations of clear interest? Hearing none. Onto announcements. I have a couple of announcements. After 39 years of dedicated service as a member of the Renfrew Fire Department, Andrew Westbrook will be retiring effective December 31, 2022. Andrew began serving his community in May of 1983 as a volunteer firefighter, and then as a full-time professional firefighter since 1994. Please join us in wishing Andrew all the best in his retirement and future endeavors, and we appreciate all his service. Another one. After nine years of service with the Town of Renfrew, Kevin Hill has made the decision to retire as of December 16, 2022. The town wishes to thank Kevin for his contribution and all the best for the future. And I also want to thank Kevin as being Chair of REC for the last eight years. It was a pleasure and an honor to work with him, so I wish him all the best. Anybody else have any announcements? Okay. Sorry, technology. Here we go. Onto the 2021 financial statements. I will now present Jason Healy from McKilliken and Associates. To present, please.
Okay, well, thank you very much, and I'd like to thank council for the opportunity to present the draft consolidated financial statements. As we can see on the screen on the left here, stop there, it's perfect. These statements will remain in draft format until such time as they are approved by council. And I'll just go over the statements, and the second page right here is entitled "The Management's Responsibility for the Consolidated Financial Statements." Point out that the financial statements are the responsibility of the town's management and prepared in accordance with Canadian Public Sector Accounting Standards. If we scroll to the next page, please, it's entitled "The Independent Auditor's Report." Sorry, two pages from now. Page number one, but it's the fourth page of the document. Yeah, there you go. So the first paragraph is the opinion paragraph and identifies the financial statements that have been audited. In this case, it's the consolidated financial statements for the Town of Renfrew. And the consolidated financial statements include, this is on Note 1 AI on page six, the amounts for the Town of Renfrew, the Town of Renfrew Waterworks, the Town of Renfrew Wastewater System, Renfrew Public Library Board, and the Renfrew Downtown Business Improvement Association. This paragraph states our conclusion is based on the results of our audit evidence. This is a stated opinion rather than a statement of absolute fact or guarantee. The conclusion is based on our professional judgment. In this case, we believe the consolidated financial statements are presented fairly in all material respects. And the report also indicates the date covered by each of the financial statements, which is the 31st of December 2021. In the basis of opinion paragraph, it states the opinion is in accordance with Canadian generally accepted auditing standards and also that we are independent in accordance with our ethical requirements. The responsibility of management and those charged with governance for the financial statements, this section of the auditor's report describes the responsibilities of those in the organization who are responsible for the preparation of the financial statements. And the auditor's responsibility for the audit states our responsibility is to obtain reasonable assurance that the consolidated financial statements are free from material statements. So if we could please turn to the next page, this will be the consolidated statement of financial position. I'll go over kind of the highlights, and if anyone has any questions, please feel free to ask. So we'll note that the total, that's good there. Thank you. The total financial assets have increased by $3.5 million as follows. Cash is up $1 million from last year, and there's a detailed, for detailed analysis, we can look at the statement of cash flow on page five. Accounts receivables up $1.5 million due to an increase in, due from Ontario related to capital work, capital grants receivable for road work done during the year. Investment in government business enterprises has also increased $890,000 due to income for the year from the entities. The financial liabilities have also increased by $2.8 million as follows. Accounts payable is up $931,000 due to an increase in general payables and holdbacks payable related to some capital projects. Deferred revenue, obligatory reserve funds have decreased $370,000 due to a decrease in the gas tax because during the year, two years, last year's and the current year allocation of the gas tax was spent, and therefore, you know, there's very little in this account at year end. And there was also, that was kind of offset by there was an increase in lot development funds for the year. Other deferred revenue is up $780,000 due to increase associated with the connecting link grant of $1.5 million and a decrease in the OC in Ontario deferred run revenue amounts. Long-term debt, if we scroll down, yeah, sorry, right there. Long-term debt has decreased $813,000 due to the scheduled repayments of the debt during the year, and this leaves the town with net financial assets of $7.3 million, which is an increase of almost $3 million over last year's amounts. Tangible capital assets, they have increased $3.5 million due to the additions exceeding the amortization for the year, and the assets are detailed on pages 19 and 20 of the audit report. The results, this results in an overall accumulated surplus of just over $113 million for the town, which also includes reserves which have increased $1.4 million over last year. Were there any questions on the state consolidated statement of financial position? Okay, if we could move on to the next page, please. That would be the consolidated statement of operations. We can see there that from prior year that overall that the revenues are up over $6 million. Now, there was a small decrease in taxation due to an increase in write-off during the year. There's an increase of $4.4 million in provincial funding related to capital projects. Also, an increase in federal funding of over $1 million, again, due to the gas tax being spent, two years' worth of allocations being spent in 2021. There's an increase in other municipal revenue from other municipalities, and this was relating to the connecting link accounting, funding for the connecting link projects related to their portion of the work. And there was also an increase in income from government businesses enterprises from last year of $319, and also an increase in the loss and disposal of assets due to the disposal of the road segments that were reconstructed during the year. Expenses were fairly consistent with budget amounts and generally aligned with that of prior year. Overall, there was a consolidated excess of revenues over expenditures of approximately $6.5 million, again, due mainly to the increase in income for the year. Were there any questions on the consolidated statement of operations?
Any questions?
Okay. So if we could turn to page number 17, it's the schedule of general operations. Yeah, oh, down a little bit for me, please. Oh, anyway. No, keep going. It's going to be after the notes. No, that's okay. Yeah, it's page number 17. Yeah, so about 10 pages from here. Okay. There we are. Perfect. Thank you so much. So we can see from the schedule of general operations that there's an excess of revenues over expenses of $5 million a year. So this is kind of probably what you're used to from budget purposes that excludes, you know, all the other entities. And the $5 million surplus, there's amounts transferred to tangible capital assets of $3.2 million. $1.2 being transferred to reserves, and $500,000 being transferred to the library. And the comparison of revenues and expenditures to prior year are fairly similar to that of consolidated financial statements. And I'll just kind of touch on the other statements included that we audited. So on page 21, just want to note that the, we found that the library financial statements presented materially, presented fairly, excuse me, in all material respects. On page 27, the BIA presented fairly in all material respects. On page 32, the Stewart Bequest Trust presented fairly in all material respects. On page 36, the Renfrew Parks and Recreation Fundraising Committee presented fairly in all material respects. And finally, the Town of Renfrew Swimming Pool Trust on page 41 presented fairly in all material respects. Were there any questions on any of those smaller statements?
Any questions, council?
Reeve Vee-Moon. And I'm only going from memory. We changed our agreement with Renfrew Hydro with regards to the interest charged. Is it, was, did that happen in '21 or did that happen in '22? I can't recall.
Sorry, just bear with me. I'm looking for it. The notes here.
I would look for it.
Page nine, yeah, that's got the RHI's. I believe it was in 2022 when that finally, the first full year, in fact, but I can get back to you on that.
It'll show up, it'll show up next year. And just for council's information, when the two, when Renfrew Hydro was split into Renfrew Power Generation and Renfrew Hydro Inc., that town, to retain an interest and also to generate income, lent them money and receive an annual payment. Renfrew Hydro asked us to reduce the interest rate on it because it affected their rates. The, it was set in 2000, I believe, and so the interest rates that we were charging was substantially higher than they were able and willing to pay, and it was negatively affecting their rates because when they set their rates, the Ontario OPEG only allows them a certain rate for debt, and I think we're about three points difference between what we were charging, what they were allowed, so we negotiated a different rate. So that'll show up next year.
Okay. There's no further questions on the consolidated statements for this town. I'd also like to review the Renfrew Innovation Centre financial statements if I could. And the audit report is the same as for the consolidated statement for the Town of Renfrew, so I won't bore you with all the different paragraphs. But suffice to say that we also found that the statements presented fairly in all material respects. If we could go to page four of those statements, it's the statement of financial position. Okay, anyway, I'll, please stop me if you have questions. I'll go over it here. So the assets have actually decreased for the Renfrew Innovation Centre by $448,000 as follows. The cash is down $247,000, and there's a detailed analysis on page seven, the statement of cash flow. But essentially, this is due to the fact that during the year, the Renfrew Innovation Centre repaid a bunch of, paid a bunch of money to the town, and that's about $414,000, which is offset by the positive cash flow from operations, once you add back the amortization amount. So that's why the cash is down. Accounts receivable is up mainly due to increase in rent receivables, which, you know, amounts were received after the end of the year. And the prepaid expenses at just under $14,000 are similar to that last year and consist of prepaid insurance. This left current assets of $147,000. For tangible capital assets, the amount, the net book value decreased by $266,000 from last year, and that's due to the current year's amortization. And the current liabilities side of things, very similar to last year. And this leaves the Renfrew Innovation Centre with net assets of $104,000, sorry, $144,000, which is down from last year, but again, down due to the fact that some funds were paid to the town. On page five of this statements, the statement of net assets, it shows that $417,881 was paid to the town during 2021. On page six, the statements of operations shows that revenues are similar from 2021 to 2020, $752,000, and the expenses were fairly consistent with that of prior year. There was a small increase in repairs and maintenance due to some electrical and roof repair work paid during the year. Overall, this resulted in an excess of expenses over revenues of $31,000. And that's kind of the statements in a nutshell. And if there's any questions on those statements, I'm happy to take those now as well.
Any questions, council? Councillor McWhiter?
Mayor, I just actually have a financial question. I'm not sure it's for him, but it's to do with the $417,000 that the town receives in dividends. Was that just allocated to be used in the budget for this year, or was that used as, allocated somewhere else?
Through you, Mayor Sidney. So it was invested in our bank account and put into a reserve for future costs for the industrial commission.
Any other questions, council? Hearing none. We have a motion here that Renfrew Town Council approved the 2021 financial statements as presented on December 20, 2022 by the town's auditor. Can I have a mover, please? Council McWhiter, secretary? Council McDonald? Any further questions? All in favor? Okay, thank you, council. Thank you very much for your presentation, Jason.
Thank you.
Onto C3, council orientation, town financial overview presented by the Treasurer Broome and Deputy Treasurer Ferguson. I will now turn it over to the Treasurer.
Thank you, Mayor Sidney. Sorry. So, good evening. Deputy Treasurer Ferguson and I are going to provide you with just a brief overview of the Treasury Department and its functions. This is intended to be just a general overview, and if there are any questions, please feel free to follow up after the presentation or through email. We'll start with the review of reserves and reserve funds, and I'll give you a definition of each. I'll get you to go to the next, the reserve and reserve fund slide, sorry. So a reserve is an allocation of accumulated net revenue. It has no reference to any specific assets and does not require the physical segregation of money or assets, and therefore does not earn interest on its own. Any earnings derived from investment of reserves are reported in the operating fund. Money in reserves can come from budget surpluses, property tax levies, or other sources of revenue. An example of a reserve that the town has is the roads, infrastructure reserve, shave and pave, or parking lots reserve. Money is allocated to these reserves for future capital costs. Reserve funds, a reserve fund is an allocation of accumulated net revenue, similar to a reserve, but assets are segregated and restricted to meet a specific purpose. All investment earnings are reported as revenue of the reserve fund. There are two types of reserve funds: an obligatory reserve fund as per statute or legislation requirements. Funds received for special purposes are segregated from the town's general revenues and maintained solely for the purpose prescribed for them. For financial statement purposes, all obligatory reserve funds are classified as deferred revenue under the liability section of the consolidated statement of financial position until all conditions to recognize the funds as revenue are met. So an example of an obligatory reserve are the development charges, gas tax, and OCIF. These types of reserve funds have to be reported separately as deferred revenue, as I noted. We also have to report the federal and provincial government with respect to how we spend these monies. Discretionary reserve fund is funds that may be segregated from the general revenues of the town at the discretion of council to finance future expenditures or to provide for a contingent liability so that funds are available as required. Are an example of discretionary reserves, or reserves that have been created by this discretion of council for financing of future projects, and most of our current reserves are considered discretionary. Moving on to the next slide is our policy. So our policy speaks to the establishment of reserves and reserve funds, and will be maintained to meet one of the following purposes: asset replacement, it's established to smooth the spikes in capital budgets and smooth out property tax changes. Project reserves, established to provide cost-effective self-borrowing mechanisms to reduce risks associated with interest rate fluctuations. Economic stability reserves is established to buffer against significant fluctuations in the economy. Contingency reserves are established to accommodate contingent unfunded or known liabilities where the amount is unknown for current and/or future years. Working fund reserves is established to provide cash flow for operations to eliminate the requirement to borrow funds to meet immediate EBL obligations. Self-insurance reserves is established to provide self-insurance provisions, and reserves can be established through the following processes: inclusion in the annual operating or capital budget, which is approved by council or through the resolution of council. The budget document or resolution will clearly identify the name of the reserve being created and the purpose for the reserve. A reserve may be amended through resolution. The next slide is the schedule of our current reserves with the audited balances of The next slide is a schedule of our current reserves with the audited balances as of December 31st, 2021. The 2022 balances and reserves are updated at year-end when preparing the capital financing schedules. I'm not going to go through what each of these reserves are utilized for, but I can touch on a few of them unless yous have questions. But basically, roads, infrastructure reserve is used for what it's called, for infrastructure. Rolling stock is for vehicle purchases. Unallocated is where our surplus or deficit gets allocated to at the end of every year. The election reserve is for election costs. Each year, we input money into there so that when election time comes, it's not a cost burden. Sorry, Peter?
Mayor Sidney, the parking lot reserve, I think it shows a balance of zero, but that's because we used it over a four-year period, and I think is next year the last year, where the drawdown is automatic and we can start accumulating again?
Correct, Peter.
Thank you.
The next slide is our other, oh, sorry.
Sorry, through, through you, Mayor Sidney. I just have a question with infrastructure. There's two there, and you might have said it, so I apologize if you did, but it was AMP 1 and 2.
Yeah, so I'll explain those for you. So AMP 1 and AMP 2, so those were created many years ago to pay off our debenture payments. A quarter of a percent is put into those reserves each year. So we've created, I think there's three or four of those reserves that are accumulating funds for future debenture payments. I will touch on those when we get to our long-term debt schedules.
Good, thanks, Treasurer Broom.
You're welcome, Councilor Agri. So our other reserves and deferred revenue, sewer, sorry. Our sewer capital work in progress is for the consultant work or any work that's done in the wastewater division. The sewer fund lifecycle reserve is used for transfers of the surplus or deficit. And the same with water capital work in progress, there's no balance in there. I believe it's one similar to parking lots that it will get, monies will get transferred in as needed. And the water fund lifecycle is same as the sewer fund lifecycle. The transfer of surplus and deficit gets put into that one. And our deferred revenue, as I spoke of before, is our MTO connecting link, OSIF and gas tax monies. These have to be reported separately for FIR purposes, and they're monies that we receive from each of those, the province and the federal monies. The development, oh, sorry, the development charges. Reserves are fees that are imposed on land development and redevelopment projects to help pay for the capital costs of infrastructure that's needed to service new development. On this slide, you'll find a listing of our current development charge accounts. A development charge is distributed amongst the following ones collected based off the rates from the DC study done by Watson Associates in 2021. So the next slide shows kind of a breakdown of contributions to and from the operating of capital reserves per the 2022 budget. Transfers to reserves of $2.4 million are transfers into reserves to build capital reserves for future projects. Transfers from reserves of $506,000 are made up from transfers from the WSIB reserve, which are utilized to cover actual WSIB costs for the prior year. In 2022, from the election reserve to cover costs for the election, and from AMP 1 to cover the debenture payment for Highway 60 downtown, and from unallocated reserves to cover restructuring costs. And lastly, there was another transfer from reserve for the community improvement plan. Transfers from reserves for capital are to pay for capital projects such as infrastructure, rolling stock, facility improvements, equipment, et cetera. And this slide shows contributions to and from the capital reserves per the 2022 budget. So the next two slides illustrate the allocations to and from reserves, which are approved during our capital budget process. I'm not sure if you want me to touch base basically on the allocations to and from, but if you have any questions, I'm more than willing to answer.
Any questions, council? No? Carry on?
Okay, so rolling into long-term debt. So the role of Infrastructure Ontario is that it provides affordable, long-term financing to public sector clients, allowing them to modernize and renew their infrastructure. Their loan program has been used to revitalize roads, bridges, build new recreation centers and affordable housing units, and purchase equipment like fire trucks and energy-efficient streetlights. There's two different types of loans. They offer a serial and amortized debenture. An example of a serial debenture is what we currently have for the wastewater plant, where the payment starts out higher and lowers over time. An amortized debenture is currently what we have for the Highway 60 downtown debenture, where the payment remains the same over the period of the loan. So I confirmed with Infrastructure Ontario as of December 12th, 2022, the years of debentures based on the amortizing and serial debenture loans. We will be looking at this for the Matteaway addition. So the rates have increased significantly over the last couple of years due to many reasons. Next slide. So I'll touch base on our current debentures that the town currently has is the Highway 60 downtown, which is a $7.1 million debenture. It's a 20-year debenture at 2.14% with annual repayments of $435,726, which will be paid in full by 2040. And we currently use the AMP 1 reserve and the water and wastewater revenue to pay this loan. We have a landfill equipment loan of $998,000. This is a 20-year debenture at 2.68% with annual repayments of $64,787, to be paid in full by 2039 by landfill revenues. Our sewage treatment plant is a $9.9 million debenture. It's a 40-year debenture at 4.79% with the repayment amount of $594,257, and to be paid in full by 2051 by wastewater revenues. We have a solar debenture in the amount of $750,000. It's a 20-year debenture at 2.89% with the repayment of $53,487 in 2022, which is to be paid in full by 2036 using solar revenues generated from the MAC, the Matteaway Activity Centre roof, and the water treatment plant roof. And lastly, the water treatment plant is a $4 million debenture. It's a 20-year debenture at 2.38% with the repayment of basically $225,000, to be paid in full by 2027 using water revenues. And the next slide shows basically what our long-term debt is at as of December 31st, 2022, and it's a total of $15,802,743.
Councilor Agri?
Through you, Mayor Sidney, to Treasurer Broom. I just have two quick questions.
Sure.
Sorry. The landfill equipment for 998,000, that's because we switched, like we took over the landfill site and we had to buy equipment, or?
Yes, so we look over, or took over, I don't know what you call it.
The operation.
Well, took over, what do you call it? When you gotta dig it all up and covering up of the landfill. So we purchased a dozer and a compactor.
Okay.
Thank you.
Okay, that answers that question. My second question is the solar at Matteaway. So just so I'm clear, we spent $750,000 to install it, and that's paid over in 2036?
Correct.
Then we start making money after 2036? Okay. Thank you.
Any other questions, council? Review?
The solar panels, the model was, we'd have about seven years of revenue before we had to replace them. Was kind of how it was financed out, so we'd have between five and seven years before we had to replace them.
No more, no more questions? Keep on truckin'. You're doing great.
Thank you. Well, it's up, up to me now, so we have some taxation.
Okay, sorry.
All good. All right, so we're going to start with some municipal taxation. The town of Rentru collects about $15 million annually. The town of Rentru only gets about $9 million of that 15, though. We collect on behalf of the school boards and the county of Rentru. So that's about 66% of that 15 million is what the town gets to use for operations, capital, et cetera. County of Rentru portion is about 24%, and the school boards, across all four school boards that we are, are under, is about 10% of the total tax dollars collected. On the next slide, you'll see the county assessment allocation and the county levy from, from that assessment and their tax rates. So like I noted earlier, we're responsible for the collection in the interim and final tax billing, and then we quarterly pay that back to the county. There's a reconciliation at the end of the year, similar to school boards, where for any supplemental tax bills that come through in the year are omitted assessments or write-offs, where that portion's then distributed back to the school boards, or we can remove it from the last quarter payment. The next slide shows the school board taxation distribution. We have English public, so the Rentru County District School Board at 59 roughly percent. I should have zoomed in. And then we have English separate, which is the county Catholic school board, and then French public and French separate being similar. And at the top there, you have their respective rates. The next slide, this is the tax dollar allocation, so this is the impact that the ratepayer feels. So in 2022, with our tax rates, we have a breakout what the municipal, county, and education portions are. So we have the residential rate per $100,000 worth of assessment would be about $1,584, based off of the MPAC data for the average single-family detached dwelling, being assessed at $171,000. The total taxes for the year collected would be $2,709, of which the municipal portion is the $1,700, $1,794, roughly $1,800. The county portion and the education portion would be remitted back to the school boards and the county. Next slide. We recently just received the assessment change summary from MPAC for the town of Rentru. You'll see there a 2.46% assessment increase compared to the destination CVA from 2022. That equates to about, sorry, I have it written here, $20 million of assessment, bearing in mind that goes against our tax rate, but it's not $20 million, but it's $20 million worth of assessment. That's made up of approximately $15 million in multi-res new assessment and $5 million in residential new assessment. You'll also see the commercial new construction was reallocated up into the commercial line item. So it does show a 100% decrease, but it is up in top in the commercial line item. And the next slide. Here is the town's total revenues as like broke out by taxation, other, other, I guess, other taxi, sorry, other revenue, Ontario and federal grants and other municipalities. So here we have the $9 million of taxation that was discussed earlier. We have other municipalities, so that's items such as rec agreements, fire agreements, like pound agreements, agreements with adjacent municipalities. Other revenue I have a note on as well, sorry, tipping fees, fees and charges, building permits, dog tags, court rent, those are the items that would be in that line item. On the next slide, we have the expenditures broke out. These are from the 2021 financial statements that everyone, that we all just saw here as well. So we have salaries and benefits broke out, interest on long-term debt, which we had talked about in the debt section, rent and external transfers, materials and contracted services, and amortization. So the amortization is on our tangible capital assets or extended over their useful life. So that's just a pie chart showing the distribution. Next slide, we have looking forward. So here are some of the budgetary pressures for the 2023 budget, which will be coming to council or committee of a whole, I guess, at the end of January. So a couple things to keep in mind are wages and benefits. Benefits increased about 7% or $30,000, and wages are an average of a 2% increase across the board. And then here is noted fire, QP, and non-union employees. Inflation, the CPI index as of November 2022 is 6.9%, which is a 6.2% increase from last year, so something to note as well. Interest rates, the most recent increase occurred on December 7th. That has a prime rate at 6.45%. Ashvold index, a year-over-year increase based on 2021 to 2022 for the months of August is 55%. September 48, October 37.8. Fuel prices, oh, sorry, fuel prices from January to June 2022. The price of regular motor gas rose 49%, and the price of diesel fuel rose 55%. And then something to also bear in mind is the Matteaway expansion costs. Detailed breakdown of that will be provided in January. And lastly, the OPP billing, our costs have actually decreased from 2022 by 66,000. Our OSIF funding allocation has decreased about $228,000 from the previous year. However, our OMPF funding has increased $53,000 to $2.4 million from 2022, and the federal gas tax has increased $11,000 to $272,000 from 2022.
Thank you very much. Does council have any questions? Councilor McQuarrie?
Through you, Mayor. To, so with MPAC changing, adding another 2.14% or something, that's automatically going to be, increase people's taxes in town just by that much? Automatic overnight, right? Is that the way it works?
No, not necessarily. The, the tax rate is comprised of assessment, tax ratios, and then the total levy that's required. So it's, and it's only distributed over certain tax classes, so it doesn't necessarily mean that all of that assessment is going to get a tax increase right away.
Okay, that's, I just want to clarify because everybody's price houses last year went through roof, and everybody was happy to get the increased asset for equity in their home, but when it comes to MPAC time and taxes go up, now they know why. So that, so they don't have to worry about that effect right now, so that's good.
The easiest way that I remember is basically a pie, and your piece of the pie might be bigger or smaller. For instance, when I lived in the city of Ottawa in Cumberland, we joined an amalgamation. My taxes went up 4%, but the, the assessed, sorry, the assessment went up 4% for my property, but they went up 7% across the city of Ottawa, so my taxes actually went down. So it's how your property, its value changes with respect to the average and through the entire town. And then there's usually a phase in now, so they're going based on, I bought my house for not the 199. I got the assessment value on, so then there's a phasing in as well. So we'll have to do some education, and hopefully MPAC, when that comes, we can help kind of deliver that message to residents that an increase in value does not necessarily mean a corresponding increase in taxes. It could happen, but there are a number of factors as Mitchell and Erin have outlined.
That's good. I just wanted to clarify because if somebody's listening and they hear us talk about that, we're going to get lots of calls tomorrow saying.
That's good. Any other questions? I guess you guys are off the hook? Good job, thank you very much. On to C4, council orientation, County of Rentru Human Resources Services. So we will hand it over to Brady Smith from the County of Rentru.
Thank you, Mayor Sidney, and thank you to council as well for having me this evening. I have a little bit of a tickle in my throat, which, given the timing, is decidedly inconvenient, but I'll do my best to take us through the services that the County of Rentru's HR Division offers. division offers and also the services that remain available to the town of Renfrew moving forward to 2023. For those of you, I guess, who don't know, the County of Renfrew has been providing HR services since December of last year. So we've just hit our one-year anniversary, and you haven't divorced us yet, so we must be doing okay. On the screen in front of me, you'll see, this is our HR department, so that denotes the reporting structure. You'll see that there are five human resources coordinators. There are also two employee health coordinators, and there's actually also some administrative support staff as well. All of us report into an HR manager, Mr. Greg Bellmore. And from there, also reporting into Director of Corporate Services, Jeff Foss, on through to Craig Kelly as CAO, and I feel the upper tiers of that, of that structure need no introduction. Will take us through just some of the resources that we're able to provide. I won't go through each one of them on this slide because there are slides dedicated to each of those, so town clerk, if you please, will move forward to the next slide. So for recruitment, you'll see there's quite a bit that the County of Renfrew is able to offer. We do review job descriptions, create job descriptions, we do job postings, applicant tracking, behavioral assessments if they're requested. We create the interview questions, provide the packages to the interview panel, and we also coordinate the interviews. And if we're invited, we also participate as well. On the back half of the recruitment cycle, we also provide recommendations on selection. We do reference checks, and we also issue the employment contracts. And as far as benefits administration, we're aware that a lot of lower tiers have benefits administrators employed within municipality. However, because a lot of the plans are all overlapping to a certain extent, the County of Renfrew is able to provide overview and support on administration of those plans. You know, any questions that members may have, we can, we can help provide support in that respect. Moving on to workplace investigations, so if that is something that comes up, we are equipped to support in that respect as well. That can include support for any internal investigations that may be required. It can also include any recommendations with respect to going externally on a workplace investigation, and also recommendations on completed investigations and next steps as far as that is concerned. Pardon me. In a similar vein, we also provide support with respect to performance management, discipline and dismissal. So that could be anything from supporting a manager in a performance management meeting, drafting any of the performance management documents or things of that nature. Policy creation and interpretation, so we've already assisted in the updating of a few new policies, which CAO Tremblay will take us through in a little bit. But what that generally entails is creation, implementation, how to apply it for managers, especially if there's new language to interpret. On the employee and labor relation side, that includes everything from grievance management, interpreting collective agreement articles, participating in the negotiation process, as well as facilitating labor management meetings. In training and development, we create training content. We have done so for the town of Renfrew. So we've created new content for the town of Renfrew, but there's also county internal content that's been created, which could easily be repurposed for the town of Renfrew and its needs. Pay equity and job evaluations. So we're able to provide recommendations on how jobs are scored, how job descriptions relate to the compensation that's assigned. A little bit more of a in-depth structure or in-depth service, but it's something that we're able to deliver. On the occupational health side of things, we're able to help with workplace injury management, functional abilities, interpreting them, return to work. This also includes ergonomic assessments and also delivering employee wellness initiatives. The part everybody wants to see. So as far as lower tier billing breakdown, that is a snippet of the actual current rates as outlined by user fee bylaw, which may undergo changes in the new year. And if anyone is interested in our current service level agreement, we can certainly provide it. Turning to collective agreements, so pardon me. At the town of Renfrew, we actually have three collective agreements. We have two QP locals, so we have local 121, which is primarily made up of our Parks and Rec, Infrastructure and Public Works, and some administrative staff. You'll see there's a number of positions that are included under that local on the screen. We have a second QP local, local 121, unit one, and that is our staff over at the Renfrew Public Library. Again, you can see the list of positions that are included in that local. Finally, we have the Renfrew Professional Firefighters Association Union, and as you might expect, we have firefighters in that union. As far as the grievances that were received in 2022, the County of Renfrew was a part of managing each one of those. There was one grievance received in Parks and Recreation during that time, which has now since been settled. We also received five grievances in 2022 from Infrastructure and Public Works. Happy to report that four are settled and one is currently ongoing. No grievances to report with our Renfrew Public Library or with our firefighter association. What the grievance management process generally looks like is the grievance is submitted to a supervisor or a department head, and shortly thereafter, the CAO or HR is notified by them, as at that point, the grievance management process begins. We assist with interpretation of the grievance, discuss upcoming meetings on how we're going to respond to the grievance, and also correspond with the union on the matter. The final step of that process is delivering correspondence in partnership with the CAO and the applicable department head. So as I mentioned earlier, there were a number of town policies that were introduced, or should I say will be introduced in a few short weeks. I know CAO Tremblay is going to take us through some of these in more detail a little bit later, but we have the organizational structure policy, the pay and benefits policy, the 2023 non-union salary grid, and the vacation and leave policy. On the recruitment side of things, it was a very busy year. At a quick glance, we had something like 20 positions that we filled. Happy to have been a part of those in tandem with my colleague Caitlin Dougherty, and also happy to see that it resulted in a lot of new municipal careers for folks at the town of Renfrew, as well as a lot of growth opportunities for internal staff.
Do I read even?
Thank you. Just an observation, not all of those 20 positions were brand-new people. Some of them moved within the organization, so just so you know, there's not 20 new faces suddenly showed up. Thank you.
So as far as training and development initiatives that were delivered, there was a session that was delivered to managers and supervisors in fall 2022. So that was on things like progressive discipline, ensuring procedural fairness and proportionality when delivering those kind of meetings, that kind of news, delivering feedback, providing direction, and having difficult conversations, which I, which I hope was well-received. So far as looking ahead to 2023, County of Renfrew's HR is going to be helping deliver an onboarding program for the town of Renfrew. As well, we're going to be launching an engagement survey. As well, we're going to look into performance management appraisal tools and a framework, reestablish that framework here at the town of Renfrew, as well as to deliver more manager training workshops. That is all I have for council. We'll take questions if there's any.
Any questions, council? Absolutely.
And just add, and just Brady as an individual, but I think the county as a resource have been very helpful to the town. We budget, I believe, $30,000, and that's not something, the quality of the professionalism and the services we're actually getting from the county, that's a lot of bang for our buck. And they're true collaborators in terms of, it is a highly unionized workforce. There's some things we need to look at and reestablish in terms of our employee-employee relationship, performance appraisals as an example, the onboarding work that'll be done. So I just want to reiterate how we're well-served by the county, and it's a pleasure to work with them.
Thanks very much.
Thank you. Any other questions?
Thank you, worship, through you. I should, I should note that council had a desire to have HR services delivered, and Director Ballmer worked out with the county what the, what the contract would look like because it was a brand-new area for us. Previously, the treasurer, when he retired, I think up to about 15 years or 10 years at least, had been the person who handled most of the HR with, with input from senior management and cooperation, of course. And so we were struggling a bit because Director Ballmer was new to the field, and we decided it was best to bring in, you know, the county, and we worked out a deal through his leadership. So thank you to you for spearheading that.
Thank you. Anybody else? I just want to say I've had not a lot of dealings with Brady, but I think the ones I have, he's a great asset, and we, I just feel it's vital to have HR services and the support because it works out to be a lot easier on staff, and it helps to educate, you know, management and how to do it in a proper way, and I think it's a great thing. So thank you very much.
Thank you, Mayor Sidney.
Hearing nothing else. Thank you very much. Onto D5.1. I'll read the motion. That Renfrew Town Council approve an extension of contracted bylaw enforcement services with municipal law enforcement services, MLEs for the town of Renfrew, for a one-year period, and technology, from January 1, 2023 to December 31, 2023. And two, that in 2023, Renfrew Town Council directs staff to review its longer-term requirements for bylaw enforcement services, considering alternatives, and recommend a program delivery option which meets its needs and objectives. Can I have a mover, please? Reviem. Second, like councillor agree. Any questions? Are we gonna? Director Ballmer, if you have?
I can certainly give a brief overview of this report, Mayor Sidney, members of council. It's an honor to present tonight. Before you, we have essentially what it amounts to is an extension of services. Our contract with municipal law enforcement services will be expiring at the end of the year. We have, in our last iteration of the agreement, looked at multi-year, but we felt it best in talking with CAO Tremblay to allow council an opportunity to become orientated with bylaw services, the level of, the level of service we do presently get from MLEs, and then, you know, have an opportunity for you to, to understand and put your own, you know, stamp on it, if you will, and which we'll bring back in 2023. Our relationship with MLEs dates back 10 years. First, they came on board when we removed the parking meters from the downtown as a pilot project. It was fairly successful, and then we started looking at the full gamut of bylaw enforcement. So MLEs spends a lot of time in parking. They also spend a considerable amount of time on things like clean yards and property standards. I think the other one would be animal control, which, which is certainly a big part of their portfolio. MLEs currently has 11, I think in my report it said 10, but I met with them today along with the, with Chief Gass. They have 11 municipal clients. They basically look after most of this part of eastern Ontario. And from that, there's a lot of efficiencies in process that we, you know, we get from that. We're, I think, along with us at Iron Prior, are the only two that have the kind of the full bylaw enforcement service. Others have, say, just animal control or just parking. So I think by allowing for the one-year extension, it gives this council time to, to become a bit more learned on bylaw enforcement. I know that's, bylaw enforcement can become very polarizing in the community. Obviously, we, enforcement is not always easily understood by, by those on the, on the wrong end of it, but it has been quite successful. I don't think in all the years we've pushed someone to the point of court order. I think there's always been resolution. It takes work. I think municipal law enforcement services and their principal and president, James McBain, are able to do that. They understand, they're professionals, and I think they've served the town well. As far as costs go, I'll just briefly say the anticipated 2023 costs will be in the, well, won't be in the neighborhood, will be $91,688 plus applicable taxes. That gives us 45 hours of enforcement and 10 hours of parking administration, and that's, the parking ticket administration, they work hand-in-hand with their finance department, and if tickets aren't paid, it goes to the POA level, it could go to plate denial, et cetera. So there, I think there's some revenues that do return. I'm not sure exactly how much that revenue is, but at the end, I think it's by extending for, for one year and giving this council an opportunity, I think it's, it's a, it's a sound recommendation. I haven't spoke yet with CAO Tremblay or Clerk Charbonneau. We did meet today, Chief Gass and I. We're doing a transition of responsibilities. Chief Gass is going to oversee the bylaw enforcement from this point forward. So we talked about some, some ongoing files that we're dealing with, and I think if we could fit it in, I don't want to put these on the spot, but I think certainly MLEs is quite open to do an orientation with this council as well, explaining their, the services they provide. So we can look at, in the new year, getting them in for an hour and having them talk about it. Valentine's Day? All right, great. So yeah, and then you'll be able to ask direct questions and, and understand, you know, the level of service that we're getting and, you know, and, and then be able to effectively make decisions on more of a long-term relationship with MLEs or the alternatives as opposed to it. So, so I'd leave you with that, and if there's any questions, I'd be happy to answer.
Any questions, council? Thank you for that description. So I'll read the motion again. That Renfrew Town Council approve an extension of contracted bylaw enforcement services with municipal law enforcement services, MLEs, for the town of Renfrew for a one-year period from January 1, 2023 to December 31, 2023. And that in 2023, Renfrew Town Council directs staff to review its longer-term requirements for bylaw enforcement services, considering alternatives, and recommending a program delivery option which meets the needs and objectives. So we have a mover? We have a senator? Is that a question or all in favor? Okay. All in favor? Carrie, thank you, council. Onto approve the minutes of council. The Renfrew Town Council confirm the minutes of the regular council meeting on December 13, 2022. Mover, please. Councillor agree. Senator? Councillor McCordar? Any questions about the minutes? Hearing none? All in favor? Carrie, thank you, council. Any notice of motion? Councillor McCordar?
Through you, mayor, or to you, mayor. I have two motions I'd like to put forward for the next meeting, January 3rd. Did I get that right, Tori? Okay. Going by direction from the new clerk, Kim. There's two motions I'd like to put forward, one's to do with horse and buggy and the waste product, and the second one is to do with electric vehicles, scooters and that, for a review of bylaws or if, if in fact we have bylaws. I've had a lot of emails and approaches and phone calls, and there's a number of growing concerns over both issues, and I'd like to put a forward motion for them to be reviewed by the appropriate committees and see if there's something we can come up with for that.
Correct. Just noted, and we'll put it on the agenda for the next meeting.
Great, thank you.
Thank you. That Ranford Town Council convene in closed session with C A O Tremblay, H R Coordinator Smith, Clerk Charbonneau, and Acting Director Ballmer, remaining in the room pursuant to the following sections of the Municipal Act 2001, Section 239, 2 dot D, labor relations or employee negotiations, and Section 239, 2 point E, litigation or potential litigation including matters before administrative tribunals affecting the municipality or local boards. Section 3, or 239, 2 point B, personal matters about an identifiable individual, including municipal or local board employees, more specifically how it relates to human resources overview, Section 2 point B, 2 point D, 2 point E, appointment of the Director of Parks and Recreation, Section 2 point B, and C A O 2022 Performance Apprezzo, Section 2 point B. Mover, please. Revenant, second by councillor Legree. All in favor? Motion's carried at 7:06. We are now in closed session. Thank you very much, council and staff, for your presentations tonight.
Okay, um, welcome back. So I'm just gonna give a report from our closed that uh, Council orientation. So we had an HR um council orientation update enclosed. And we have a motion coming forward that Renfrew Town Council approved the appointment of Jordan Wall as Director of Parks and Recreation effective immediately. Mover please. Counselor Sobolski, second by Counselor Legri. Any questions? All in favor? That's carried. And also we discussed um CIO Tremblay's probation is uh concluded. And he has successfully completed his six months and we're gonna keep him so. So that's good thing. The bylaw one oh seven dash twenty twenty two, one oh eight dash twenty twenty two, one oh nine dash twenty twenty two listed on the agenda December twentieth, twenty twenty two. Be taken as read and passed. Mover please. Counselor Legri, second by Councilor Quarter. All in favor? Motion is carried. So upcoming meetings, we have a special council meeting January third at six, a regular council meeting January tenth and seventeenth. And a committee of the whole on January thirty first. So that's that. Just before we adjourn, I just want to take a moment to uh, this will be the last council meeting for uh twenty twenty two. And I just wanna thank council. I know it's been a huge learning curve since November fifteenth. I think it's a great team and I'm really happy to be working with you. I want to thank the tremendous staff that we have, CIO Tremblay, Director Ballmer, the clerks team, treasury, infrastructure planning, economic development, all of them. Every staff member is vital to uh to this town and we want to thank them and um wish them a very Merry Christmas and happy holidays and especially the council as well. Have a safe uh safe holiday and to the citizens of Renfrew, thank you for your patience with us as we learn. And have a very Merry Christmas and we look forward to uh hitting the ground running in twenty twenty three. So with that, we adjourn at nine twenty two. Have a good night. Thank you very much, council.